Call the Board of Supervisors to order and rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
Roll up. People are in the Mediterranean, Florida, Colorado.
You're blaming me for this.
Lucky we got enough here.
For sure.
These two are smart enough to go someplace warm.
David Lino is snowed in in Colorado. Susan is in the Mediterranean, right?
Morocco.
Morocco.
Morocco, yeah.
I think.
So what are we doing here?
Yeah.
Fisher's in Florida. City's in Virginia.
He's getting donuts.
And Fisher forgot to bring the donuts.
Is there anybody wanting to turn?
John, you gotta push in.
No, no. Hi, President.
Where's Ben?
Ben's teaching school.
Holy mackerel. Seven absent. Well, we can't do any business today. Too many people are gone. Chuck Brand is back.
Yes, sir.
And Holly's here.
Dick, you gotta sign in.
Really? Okay.
We've got Haines to read for. I should do it then, huh?
Okay.
Sixteen present, five absent. Motion to present the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mark Rorner, seconded by Chuck Brand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. For correspondence, you have the unassigned fund balance letter. You have the Thurgelson letter and Scott Green letter. The Scott Green letter, I distributed pretty much to the committee beforehand and I just put it on this month so everybody has public knowledge of what it is. From what an email told me, that all the questions have been answered by Dan Williams and that, and so they've been taken care of. The committee is well aware of the questions, the ad hoc committee.
Yes.
And they're taking them under consideration. We have the annual report on gifts, grants, and donations. Does anybody have any questions on them? And we have the Door County Housing Authority annual report. Anybody got any questions on any of them? If not, we'll move on to public comment. Anybody in the public want to comment? That's good. We'll go to the administrator's public and monthly report.
And the administrator has no monthly report. If anybody has any questions on anything, I'll try to answer those.
Anybody got any questions?
Happy February.
Thank you.
We've got the minutes of the motion, motion to the minutes of the January 27 meeting. Someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion by John, seconded by Dick Haynes. Are there any questions or additions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That has passed. We'll go to the resolution. Purchase of a fuel tank, truck chassis, and highway department. John, you wanna make a motion and?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for approval of Resolution 2015 dash 14.
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Joel. Do you want John Cozy to come forward or does he have any questions?
Well, I don't know. If you read the resolution, this is just a formality. It's already in the budget. It's already been approved. It's just because the amount the state statute says we have to bring it here, and that's why it's here. It's already been in the budget. It's already been approved. If there's any more questions, while John is back here, I can answer them for you.
Has anybody got any questions? We'd better go a roll call vote on that. Yeah. Go roll call vote with your board in board. You want, we're waiting for you to vote, John.
He doesn't know if he wants to approve it.
That has passed sixteen for, five absent. Next item is Resolution 15, double ceiling.
Selling.
Selling.
Ceiling.
Ceiling.
Monk beds.
Ceiling.
Chuck, you wanna make a motion to approve it?
Sure.
And then if we get a second, then you can explain it.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 2015 dash 15 for double selling with a written joint determination to the Door County Board of Supervisors.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Kathy. Do you wanna explain it or?
Sure. It's a, it's the general formality. The jail inspector came up and looked at the way that we operate within the jail and explained that in order for us to do double selling, which, or double bunking, which we're not doing at this time, we would have to have this joint resolution between the sheriff and the county board. And it would mean nothing, explain to us, it would mean no additional staffing. The president's staffing and the way that they do things back there is adequate. This just puts it in writing.
Are there any questions? Okay, we'll go to the board of board and approve it or disapprove it. That has passed by sixteen yes and five absent. The next item is the transfer of non-budgeted funds, exercise the option to purchase the cherry school property. And I think Grant wants to report on that, and I think what suggests what we want to do.
What has arisen since this came up are some issues that need to be resolved before we close. Those issues are primarily related to communication and decision-making on the part of the Door County Child Care Services, Inc. And as I sit here today, I'm not certain that the county knows precisely what the option price is, nor whether there have been any improvements to the property that is subject to the option that would impact the option price, and what property precisely is subject to the option. The reason I say the latter is there have been one tract of land purchased by the childcare center and added to the parcel that is subject to the option to purchase after the option was granted. I've been attempting to communicate with staff or representatives of Door County Child Care Services with varying degrees of success. The people that I am able to contact are helpful, but they are not in a position to make a decision. So my recommendation is that this be postponed until the March County Board meeting, when we'll have a better idea of what the option price, or whether or not the option price will change, and a better feel for when the issues that are standing in the way of closing may be resolved.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to postpone it till the March meeting. Someone like to make that motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by John Burr, seconded by Kathy Schultz. Does anybody have any questions or any discussion? Be ready for it.
I think he's finding out that there might be something saying that. And also, like, somebody may have captured some of the money.
It's really shaky operation.
We take a horse, we don't take a horse way.
We should probably stay away from this thing.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone it. Go to your voter board and vote yes or no. That has passed on a vote of sixteen yes, five absent. Next item is an appointment of the committee commissioners and boards. There's an appointment for Sandy Stork to replace Joanne Schley on Door County Housing Authority. Someone would like to make that motion?
I'll make.
Motion by Chuck Brand, seconded by John Cook. Has anybody got any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Senior citizen, senior and community center newsletter funding. Mark, you wanna make a motion and explain it?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2015 dash 18.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Roy. Go ahead.
Basically, what we wanna do is move the printing of the newsletter out of house, which would involve selling some advertising. The company that does the printing would handle all that. The advertising would have to be approved, of course, by the staff at the senior center before it is put in. Many of the other senior centers have done this to offset costs. Not on, you know, those of you who've seen Church Boltons, that kind of thing. It's basically what you'd be, what you'd be looking at. And I think Joe's here, if you have any other further questions.
Does anybody got any questions? Go to, well, wait here a second. We're going too fast, aren't we? Okay, vote for it, yes or no on the resolution? Does it make any difference if we move the timeline? That has passed on a vote of sixteen yes and five absent. Next item is a position on the Human Services Department. Someone wanna make a motion to bring this forward, and then we'll have Joel come up and explain it.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Holly. Joe, you wanna come forward and walk us through this one?
Do we have to take a break then? Forty-five?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the request that I have in front of you is related to a change in staffing. As we go to family care, which we talked about last month while I was here, as we go to family care, we will have a shift in fiscal impact in terms of what we're putting into the current long-term care program and money we will have remaining. I'm asking for three additional staff positions to cover areas of need within the department, and increase of hours for two of our current part-time children's case managers. So the package is really impacting two existing positions, and then requesting three new positions that are not currently part of our organizational chart. When we go to family care, we will lose seven positions, or eliminate seven positions. Some of those aren't currently county positions, because over the last couple of years, as we've had people leave, we've filled those with contracted workers as opposed to county workers. But that's what the request is related to, or related to. You have a fiscal impact statement that was prepared by Mark Janiak. He and I have gone through this multiple times over the years, and a couple of times in this last six months, just to look at what's the impact of family care going to be. The truth about the fiscal impact of family care is, these are our best guesses. And based on those estimates that we have, we are, I feel confident that we'll be able to still remain within our tax levy in terms of, we're not asking for additional funding for these three new positions and these two increases in hours. If you have some specific questions, I can answer those. I certainly could go into a lot more detail, but I wanna give you more than you need.
Does anybody got any questions? If not, go to the board of board and vote yes or no. That has passed on a vote of sixteen yes and five absent. We're gonna deviate from the agenda a little bit. We have a presentation at 10:45, or a little bit earlier, early for that, and we wanted to make the Charlie Carlson consultant thing after that. So we're gonna jump down to fourteen on the agenda. There's no new business that I know on. Is there any committee reports, oral committee reports? We're gonna cover that part of the agenda, and then we're gonna take a break though, 10:45, so. Does anybody got any oral committee reports? Okay, has anybody got any questions on any of the minutes? All right. And then any question?
Tough ground.
Tough ground. Any vouchers, claims, or bills? Any questions on them? If not, we're gonna take a, go ahead, Mark.
I can touch on the FEMA grant status if you want, under thirteen.
Okay. Yes, please do. Yeah, excuse me, that's a good, good point. Go ahead.
The FEMA grant has basically been done. If you read what was in your package, you'll see there's about $140,000 of money coming back to the general fund. We were able to stay under budget. If you read the letter from Mr. Thurgelson praising our county, the county board and the cats and all the committees involved for their forethought in these projects. So, once again, all the equipment is in place. It is operational, and the system has made some great improvements. Other than that, there's not much else to say.
Does anybody got any questions? The other thing on the announcement, there's no, any questions on the vouchers, claims, or bills? If not, I wanna call everybody's attention, the regional meeting on the WCA in Appleton on March 19th. You each got a letter on that. If anybody wants to, can attend. It's a one-day situation. The Door Kiwanee legislative days are on April 15th to the 16th, and the WCA conference, September 20th to 22nd. And Joe would like to have some idea on how many people are going to attend each of those, so the hotel rooms can be planned ahead of time with the deadline.
At Door Kiwanee, you should let me know as soon as possible, and WCA, no later than the middle of April.
Does everybody got that? Anybody got any questions on that? If not, we're gonna recess till quarter to 11 for the Grand Travers Island report.
Are you gonna run out?
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I just wanna say thank you all very much for letting me come speak to you today. Dan asked me not to put you to sleep, so I'll try my best not to do that, keep it short and interesting. I wanna respect your time here. Now, for those of you who don't know me, my name is John Bacon. I'm a National Outdoor Leadership School graduate and University of Puget Sound alum. For about three years, I was a professional sea kayak guide, both here in Door County and up in the Apostle Islands, although I've recently returned to school to earn my accounting degree, and I'm on the road to becoming a third-generation accountant. Today, I'm here to speak to you about the Grand Traverse Islands on behalf of Friends of the Grand Traverse Islands, which is a group that I made part of. Many of you may be reading the subtitle up there and thinking to yourself, mm, not likely, or mm, doubt it. And to be realistic, you know, you're probably right. But if that's how we approach opportunities in life, we'll never jump at anything. Nothing's ever gonna happen if we don't try. And we should definitely try here, because the payoff on this one would be huge economically, historically, environmentally, it would be a very big deal. The national park system, as a, as a whole, brought in $14.6 billion with a B dollars of spending to gateway communities in 2013. With 401 National Park Service units, that's about $34.6 million of spending to gateway communities each and every year. That's a pretty big deal in and of itself. Historically, national parks also do a fantastic job of protecting and preserving our most important cultural and maritime structures and, and our past. And national parks, especially those designated as wilderness, do a really, really important job of protecting lands for threatened and endangered species. So I'm hoping by the end of this presentation, you'll be thinking, hmm, instead of not likely, and yeah, instead of doubt it. And I hope you'll be willing to help us make that happen, and we'll see if I can succeed or not. All right. Now, first, where are the Grand Traverse Islands and what are they like? Because not everybody knows about them or has heard about them. A lot of people think we're talking about lower Michigan. I'll start, start by turning this into a map that's a little easier to look at, right? So at the bottom of the screen, we can see northern Door County, what we're all familiar with, Washington Island, kinda right in the middle. Up at the top is the Garden Peninsula, which is Door County's sister peninsula in upper Michigan. And those are the Grand Traverse Islands. That's what we're talking about here. Part of the vast Niagara escarpment, they consist of dolomitic limestone rock that was formed, according to scientists, over 425 million years ago from the compressed sediments of a warm tropical sea. Rare plants and animals call them home. Songbirds, bats, and butterflies return to them each and every summer. Trees believed to be over 500 years old, perhaps 700 or more cling to their nearly vertical rock bluffs. They're an amazing place. They consist of miles of achingly beautiful shoreline. This is taken off of Poverty Island in the spring. Just imagine yourself kayaking along this. It's amazing, right? Now, you can kayak along this pretty easily. This is Rock Island State Park, but there are a lot of other islands out there that have this kind of grandeur, and it would be cool if they were all part of a park. And beyond all this, beyond the scenery and the wildlife and the geology, the Grand Traverse Islands represent, represent an important piece of our collective maritime and cultural heritage encompassing places like the Potawatomi Lighthouse on Rock Island, the site of Wisconsin's oldest lighthouse, the Thorarson Estate on Rock Island, which was home to the Icelandic-American inventor of the first million-volt transformer, the Plum Island Lightkeeper's House and Range Lights, and the, and the Plum Island US Life Saving Station, which is the last remaining Duluth-style life-saving station on the Great Lakes, Poverty Island, one of the most endangered lighthouses in Wisconsin, the St. Martin Island Lighthouse, which is one of the few exoskeleton lighthouses on the Great Lakes, and the Poverty Island Lighthouse, which is the, according to Lighthouse Digest Magazine, the most endangered lighthouse in the entire nation, right here on our doorstep. It's a beautiful old building, creamy brick walls. I mean, it needs a lot of help, a lot of these lighthouses do. But when I talk about the history of the area, I'm not just talking about lighthouses. Talking about Native American settlements. You know, there are archaeological sites all over the islands. I'm talking about voyagers, and the French voyagers and the Jesuit missionaries. That's how the Grand Traverse Islands got their name. They represented a grand traverse as these people paddled from island to island. Talking about Scandinavian and Icelandic fishing settlements. You can find ruins of them on Rock Island and St. Martin Island. And I'm talking about shipwrecks, of course, lots and lots of shipwrecks. That's why we have all the lighthouses. And I'm not the first person to say that they should be protected. I mean, as I've said, there are just so many reasons why they're a unique, a special, a significant place. I'm not the first person to recognize it. In fact, in 1970, the U.S. Department of the Interior in its Landmark Islands of America report identified what they called the Green Bay Islands for special protection. Now, at that time, they wanted to focus on only a certain set of places to get designated as national lakeshores. They identified this as a prime candidate for what they termed an interstate wilderness park, or something to that effect. And on the heels of that recommendation, the states of Wisconsin and Michigan began jointly planning for that park's creation. Michigan was gonna manage a state park on the northern side, and Wisconsin was gonna manage it on the southern side. And Wisconsin went so far as to actually conduct environmental impact study of the proposed state park in 1978. And you can find some of these plans and reports. You can see where they were gonna have trails and where they were gonna have a dock. In fact, one interesting report that dates back all the way to 1964 was a Bureau of Outdoor Recreation study where they looked at the, at the whole area as a potential national park, and they calculated down to the price of chainsaws. So I mean, there was, there was some interest in this at the time. Unfortunately, the legwork hadn't been done, from my understanding, unlike the Apostles, unlike Pritchard Rocks, unlike some of these other places that had decades-long, had had a decades-long process in place when the time was right. I guess the Grand Traverse Islands didn't have that effort. And so, the time passed, and I think the changing politics, the 1980s, and the budget shortfalls and things like that, that's my understanding of what happened. It fell apart. The momentum was lost. And so, all the historic structures here were left abandoned and to decay, and, and it remains, although very much publicly owned, not really publicly known or celebrated or, or visited. Which, in our opinion, as Friends of Grand Traverse Islands, is an absolute tragedy. We don't want that to be the end of the story for these islands. They're a really amazing place. If you've been up there, you know. There are just so many reasons why they should be more, why they are worthy of national lakeshore designation, why they, why national lakeshore designation would be a good thing. And I should clarify, national lakeshore, national park, I kinda use them interchangeably. There is like slight technical difference, but they're pretty much the same in everything but name. So, reasons. Reason number one, the Niagara escarpment. The Niagara escarpment is one of the greatest defining geological features of North America. One of, recognized as one of the world's unique natural wonders, at least here. The Canadian section of the escarpment has been designated a UN Biosphere Reserve. So we're kinda behind the eight ball in a sense here. You know, the United States doesn't have a single national park that celebrates the Niagara escarpment. Even Niagara Falls, that's a national historic area. It talks about life around the falls, which, and it's cool, but that's not the same as national parks. So one of the big reasons would be to draw attention to a national treasure. And there are, there are efforts going on locally to try and make that happen, and if, the Town of Liberty Grove is working on a Greater Escarpment Organization effort to build a Niagara escarpment interpretive center right here in Ellison Bay. This would be a great complement to, to that effort. Reason number two, to save our endangered Great Lakes maritime history, right? The areas, historical structures are in grave danger. Many of them are threatened by disrepair and collapse, especially those on Pilot Island, Poverty Island, and St. Martin Island. And if we don't act to save them soon, there may be nothing left to be saved. And thankfully, we have the efforts of, you know, the group Friends of Plum and Pilot Island to save some of the lighthouses down here, and the Friends of Rock Island did a fantastic job of saving Potawatomi Lighthouse. But St. Martin, Poverty, they don't have so much help, and it's a struggle. We could have access to a lot more resources to protect these places if there was a national lakeshore designation. So now is kinda the time. Reason number three, to preserve land for threatened and endangered species. Northern Door County, the Grand Traverse Islands, and Delta County provide critical habitat for a great number of threatened and endangered species. Canada ewe, dune thistle, hind's emerald dragonflies, glacial land snails that are relics from 11,000 years ago and don't exist anywhere else in the world, monarch butterflies, which are really struggling lately. You've probably heard about on the news. Regionally, the habitat for these species is really dwindling, so to set aside more land for them and to manage that land as a single unit rather than a bunch of different parcels cared for by a bunch of different organizations, that would be a big thing. That would really help them. Reason number four, to provide greater public access to an archipelago of great natural beauty. You know, as with other wilderness areas, the Grand Traverse Islands have the power to help us discover ourselves and our connection to nature. They have the power to replenish our souls, to literally recreate ourselves out there. But they can't do that if public access to them is limited, as is currently the case on some of the islands in some places, and as would be the case if the area became a national wildlife refuge, as is looking to happen if the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service continues to purchase more and more of the islands. It's looking at St. Martin, it's looking at Poverty, it's looking at Rocky, and so, you know, a lot of these places real, will be for the birds, and you won't be able to land there, most likely. Reason number five, to make them safer. Right now, it's very dangerous to visit the islands, especially by sea kayaker sailboat. No safe harbor exists between Rock Island and Fairfort. No safe harbor exists between Rock Island and Fairfort, Michigan. There are a lot of places where you're not supposed to land. That doesn't stop people from wanting to go up there, obviously, and they always will. So although that doesn't have too much to do with this county specifically, a safe harbor on St. Martin and Summer Island created as part of that national lakeshore would really make the archipelago safer for visitors. And then reason number six, which I talked about earlier, economic growth. One thing I'd like to mention here, and stick with me if this seems a little crazy versus Walmart, right? Walmart, it's all over North America, it's all over the world. And what do you find in Walmarts? You find a lot of things, but especially on bookends and a couple of places throughout the store, you're going to find Grant McNally Road Atlas, right? And what's always in these atlases, whether they're great or small, it's a map of the United States. And there are like four things that it shows on this map. It shows state lines, it shows highways, it shows major cities, and it shows areas of significance, almost all of which are national parks. So in a very real way, national lakeshore designation could put us on a map in a way that we could not otherwise achieve. It would be a really big deal. So with all these reasons, and there are others too, what should be done? You can probably guess what I'm going to say here, right? Make them national. That's what should be done. Well, what might that national lakeshore look like? It could look like this, highlighted in green. Believe it or not, the vast majority of the areas highlighted here are already publicly owned by local, state, and federal agencies and organizations. Even though some of them, like St. Martin Island, are publicly inaccessible, you're not supposed to land there. And remember, this is only a proposal. The actual park, were it to ever be created, wouldn't need to include all of these lands. And in fact, even if no private land was included, you'd create a significant national lakeshore. I can't remember the exact numbers, and it changes as you add and subtract things. But what you're looking at here, if you just look at the islands themselves and even vast majorities of the mainland sections, I think it's close to like 85, 90% of what's highlighted there is already publicly owned. You know, I kind of, to make it look pretty filled in the gaps, that's it. You don't need those gaps. Just with public land, you could have a significant, significant park. All right then, so what's the process? How is it created? Well, nothing political is ever easy, but the process is in many ways quite straightforward. First, Congress would need to pass a bill authorizing the National Park Service to conduct what's called a Special Resource Study, or SRS, of the area in question. That would determine the area's significance, suitability, its feasibility in the eyes of the federal government. Second, the result of that SRS would need to be positive, which I think it would, based on the reasons I've outlined to you. And third, Congress would need to pass a law declaring a national lakeshore. That or the president could declare a national monument on federally owned lands under the 1906 Antiquities Act, which, if the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service continues to acquire more of the lands, could be a possibility down the road. Obviously, none of that's going to happen overnight, but here's the big point. Those three things are totally possible. That can happen. All we need is a sustained effort and a voice to show our representatives that we care. And I should mention that if an SRS is conducted, and the only negative found, the reason it comes back negative is simply because of our current budgetary constraints as a nation, that's still a really good thing. That means we've done the legwork and we're on the shortlist. The executive office and Congress, by law, have to look at possible areas for future designation every year, every other year. It's apparently required by law. And so if we're on that shortlist, that means they've got us in mind. So if down the road it happens, we're right there. We can be ready for that opportunity. And that's really the goal here, is to be on that shortlist. Okay? Now, a couple of warrants here. What about hunting? What about commercial fishing industries? What about the overdevelopment of national parks? Nothing says national parks and national lakeshores can't allow hunting and commercial fishing, even if those areas are designated wilderness. Just look at the Apostle Islands. All of it happens there, and it's a wilderness area. Everybody's happy, nobody, their rights aren't restricted. And remember, the current direction that the Grand Traverse Islands are heading is a national wildlife refuge. So by creating a national lakeshore, you're actually protecting more lands for hunters than would otherwise be the case. Okay? What about commercial fishing? Same kind of thing. Commercial fishing can be allowed, national lakeshore. The important thing is that to make sure, absolutely 100%, that just needs to be allowed for, it needs to be written into whatever legislation is passed by Congress. And if that's the case, then it's allowed. And that's what we're proposing. Okay, what about wilderness? Overdevelopment of some national parks. You see Yellowstone or Smoky Mountains, places that are zoos, they've got, you know, gift shops on every corner. That's obviously going to hurt those threatened and endangered species that we have here. Well, as for those concerns, yes, they are commercialized. Yes, they are, those parks are overcrowded. But the important thing to remember is that we're proposing a wilderness national lakeshore, and that means no development is allowed of any kind. You're not even really supposed to have power tools out there. You know, you may have a few wilderness sites, you may have a few trails, you may have dock repairs and restoration work on the lighthouses. That's what's limited in a wilderness area. And on top of that, the geology and the remoteness of the area just isn't going to support that kind of development. We're never going to be pulling in millions and millions of people every day like Yellowstone, so we don't have to worry about a National Park Service diner on St. Martin Island. It's just not part of the picture. So, now, going back to the question at the beginning of my PowerPoint, the Grand Traverse Islands, our next national lakeshore. Well, yeah, right? It should be. It's possible, especially if you help. And so this is why I've come here to you today, is to talk about that. How can you help? There are a couple of things that you could do. You could prepare a nonpartisan report on the Grand Traverse Islands, or ask the Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission to update their 1976 report. And two, you could write us a letter of support, which the Door County Visitor Bureau, the Town of Liberty Grove, the Delta County Chamber of Commerce, and a number of other organizations, they've done that. But a letter of support from you would go really far. People, our representatives would certainly listen if we got a letter of support from you. Okay, now regarding number one, we need a nonpartisan objective report that explores the natural and historic importance of the area. The current, likely future of the Grand Traverse Islands should nothing be done. The possibility of creating a national lakeshore there, the pros and cons of doing so and the lesser alternatives. Such a report would really help us make the case to Congress. Now, as I mentioned, the Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission did a 1976 report about this. And so we actually went and we talked to them first to see if they would update it. They said we should come to you, and that you should be the ones to ultimately decide whether the Door County Planning Department took this on, or they did. And so if that's something the Door County Planning Department should do, maybe you could request that they do that. Or you could put it in the court of the Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission. They've expressed interest, if that's the route we want to go. And they would be willing to help the Door County Planning Department if that were, if you wish that to be the case. Regarding number two, writing a letter of support. Now, you may ask, isn't writing a letter of support a little bit premature, given that you're asking for a nonpartisan report, and we haven't seen the results of that yet? Well, don't call me biased, but I would argue, no, it's not. I've made the case through today why it should be a national lakeshore. It should. There are very compelling reasons. And as our group, I mean, again, maybe we're biased, but we think it's highly likely that that's what the report would show. In the 1976 report by the Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission, it went through all these alternatives for the area. And in the end, the most beneficial one, although potentially the most politically difficult, was a national lakeshore. That was the one that would, you know, protect, preserve, and provide public access to the Grand Traverse Islands in the best possible way. Now, why bother then? Why bother with a report? Well, a report would very likely be considered and even referenced in a National Park Service SRS if it were authorized to conduct one. And such a report would have the power to better inform the National Park Service's ultimate decision. And if letters of support aren't enough, the report might actually move Congress to authorize such an SRS. We're hoping, therefore, that you'll be willing to help us on both fronts. By way of concluding, I just want to say this. There's this incredible opportunity here. It's not likely, no, but it's right there on our doorstep. And should we jump? Yes. Because if we succeed, the benefits, there'll be stratosphere. So I hope this excites you. I hope it interests you. I hope you're willing to support us. And if you want to find out more about the islands or what we're doing, you can go to www.granchorresilence.com, or contact me anytime. I've got a business card I can give you. And again, thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I really do appreciate it. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Aren't some of these islands, though, that you're not allowed on right now, that, like you're talking about, like Pilot and some of those that you can go up? But they've allowed people on like one time a year, or?
Yes. It's really exciting to hear that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is considering opening Plum Island up. It did twice this last year, which is a big, big step, Plum Island, because they've been saying they were going to do that for a long time. And the Friends of Plum and Pilot Island, which is an awesome organization, has been really trying to push for that. And they've finally gotten to a point where they've pressed hard enough that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service opened it up for two days as a trial period and may consider opening up in the future. That can't be said of most wildlife refuge areas or most areas owned under the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, but it is exciting to hear that. Pilot Island, off limits. St. Martin, and I don't know if it's sold yet to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service or not. I believe it's still owned by the Nature Conservancy. That's off limits. You're not supposed to go there.
Now, which one is it that the birds have virtually destroyed all of the vegetation on?
Pilot. Yeah, that's unfortunate. Those, some of those islands, those nesting sites, they would remain nesting sites. Those are important rookeries and places that I'm talking about, the gravel islands, the little gravel islands and places like that.
This was not a unique idea. I think Grant can talk to it, that this was something Robert Florence did back in the 70s already?
Yeah, I'll come up front. We were, the county was involved in this back in, I think, 1976 is when the initial study was complete.
Around that, yeah.
Yeah. So it's not a unique idea, it's just 40 years later. So what I would suggest is that the board refer this to the administrative committee and have the administrative committee consider the two options that have been put forward, a letter of support, which would take the form of a resolution authorizing the letter, and whether or not the county wanted to become involved with, either through Bay Lake Regional Planning or one of its internal departments in updating the study or conducting a new study. This was sort of an introduction to the subject matter.
Okay. Any more questions of John? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very interesting. Do we need a motion up for that, or just go ahead and?
By consensus.
By consensus. What we'll do is we'll turn it over to the administrative committee. I was thinking of the RPC committee. Because they deal with Bay Lake. We'll send it to both committees. Unfortunately, the RPC committee is on vacation this week, aren't they?
Not the committee. We got a few, we got one member here.
Who, a few? That's it. So, okay, the next item on the agenda is Charlie Carlson's going to talk to us about the recruitment process of administrator. I don't know, you want to say anything on it, Kelly? You can come up and, come on up, Kelly, and introduce him. And then he's going to give a talk on whatever, two parts of the talk. Go ahead, Kelly.
Good morning. Charlie's been around for a while, and he's been here before, so he's probably not new to many of you. He is from Carlson Detman, and he is going to talk about the recruitment process for the county administrator. In your mail, you should have received a memo which kind of outlined the two topics that were going to be up for discussion today, along with some literature that would support that discussion. Some draft ads for the county administrator, and then an evaluation process that's been vetted out in Calumet County already. So Charlie, we'll start by talking about the recruitment process and then move into the evaluation. So welcome, Charlie Carlson.
Thank you, Kelly. Chairman, a couple of comments, and then I think I would probably serve you best by opening a floor to questions, because you may have a few about this process. Yeah, obviously, I've been around a little while, to say the least. I'm reminded from your last presentation of how special a place Door County is. My family's been coming here for decades, and we regard it as a special place. And so I'm pleased and honored to have the opportunity to hopefully give you some good advice on what you might be doing going forward. You're in the midst of making probably one of the most important decisions you're going to make during your terms on the county board. I believe that leadership matters a lot. I think we have plenty of examples from our own experience of good leadership and the consequences, and bad leadership and the advantages. I'm a sports enthusiast, I'm a diehard Badger. I grew up in Illinois, I admit to that, but I converted in the 70s and worked for the university for years. And as you know, there was a time in our life of our university where we didn't have a great athletic program. And since Pat Richter and Barry Alvarez took over, life has changed materially. This isn't a decision of, about running a sports program. It is a decision about managing your county. And I've had the opportunity over the last 40 years to dole out a lot of advice about how to manage county government. Most of it was good, some of it probably not as good as others. But in this question of county leadership, I think I know a little bit. I started advising Calumet County 40 years ago, and handled all their human resource work for about 30 years. In fact, I'll be there tomorrow, because we're meeting with their new director. Helped the county in recruiting its current administrator, and I've helped a number of others as well. County government is very complex. This is not a simple business. You do a lot of different things. I think it's particularly complex in Door County, because in the wintertime, you're a county of one size, and in the summertime, you're about 10 times larger in terms of the population that's here. That creates a unique service environment. Human services, public health, emergency services, et cetera. So it's a unique challenge that you face. You've been through a couple of recent experiences that were difficult for you. And I think we need to do this one right. We need to have a win here. And so I was asked by Kelly and Grant, the administrative committee, to make some recommendations on a process that you might follow, both in selecting, recruiting, and selecting a good administrator, as well as evaluating that administrator once that person is here. So my thoughts were these. Is, and if I could say one thing to you about this process, it'd be to take your time and be patient. Do what you have to do to pick the right person. And in order to do that, I suggested sort of a tiered process of screening applicants. I think you're going to get a lot of applicants. I think you're probably going to get a lot of bad applicants, too. The question is to find the really good ones, and to weed them out, and to bring them forward. And in order to do that, I've suggested that we advertise fairly broadly. I've suggested that you, you've established in your advertisement what the minimum salary is that you would pay, but I'm suggesting you be open as to where you might go with that salary, depending upon the qualifications of the applicant. I was asked by the committee, what do I think it's going to cost to bring in a good administrator? And my answer is, I don't really know. You're such a prime location that you may attract a more senior experienced administrator who has maybe even retired under a retirement plan somewhere else and wants to spend another 10 years working, not got a lot of gas left in the tank, and thinks this is a great place to live. I would think that's probably a right attitude. You might also find somebody who is up and coming in the business and is going to cost you a little more. I just wouldn't get too excited, at this point, about the price. I'd get excited about the applicant. I've suggested that the applicants be required to do some writing as part of the interview process, to screen them out. I think a good candidate should be able to communicate effectively. I think a good candidate- I think a good candidate should be willing to work a little bit at getting the job. I've suggested that you have a, a screening process internally with a lot of different players who, who can bring what they know to the process and help you think this through and, and wean that list down to the top applicants. I've suggested that, that you involve a, a good behavioral psychologist for your top candidates to screen them, to see, make sure that the personality mix is appropriate for you, that there aren't any things hidden that you want to know about before you hire There's a due diligence that just has to go through. And if in the first round of recruitment, you don't find what you want, back up and do it again. You don't, you don't need to get in a hurry. You're currently in very good hands here with interim administration. Ideally, you'd like to have somebody in place before you get into the summer budget process. That would be nice, so that the person was here for the entire financial cycle coming Last week, I, I was contacted by a, a national news publication that wanted my opinion as to what was the impact of Act Ten on the Wisconsin public sector. As you know, we, we're getting a little international attention these days because of the presidential race. That was the reason for the call. And so they figured since I'd been around so long, maybe I would have some sense of perspective in history. I've been doing this so long, I started collective bargaining before we had interest arbitration. So I've sort of seen the whole lifecycle. And the reporter asked me what I, what I saw as being the, the largest impact of, of Act Ten on Wisconsin government. And I said, absolutely, my answer is, it caught management totally unprepared. When you've spent forty years managing an organization off of a collective bargaining agreement or a set of collective bargaining agreements, and that rule that gets torn up and all of a sudden you have managers who have really, in many cases, no experience managing any other way, we have a problem. And so I identified for the committee and for Kelly, I felt that the number one thing, if I were you, I would be concerned about in my next administrator, is finding somebody who's got a lot of talent in selecting and developing good department heads. And I say that because Door County, like most counties in the state, I haven't found one that, that didn't fit this rule yet, about two-thirds of public employees in Wisconsin County government are over age forty-five. And so we're going to see a tremendous loss of leadership and experience over the next ten years. We have a lot of people to replace. And so somebody who is particularly gifted in picking good leaders and developing those leaders would be a real good idea. I'm probably a little more concerned about that as to whether or not they can add, subtract, and multiply on a budget. We can hire that talent. I'm less concerned about things like employee relations because we can, we can secure that talent as well and manage that process now. But I am concerned about our ability to hire managers, to teach them how to do performance reviews, to hold them accountable, and to work with you on issues like strategic planning and strategic direction. So be thoughtful about this process as you go through it. Take your time. Do it right. Be careful. Pick somebody you really got a lot of confidence in. If you have a doubt, don't pull the trigger. The second thing that I was asked to address by the committee is what is a meaningful performance evaluation process for your leader? I just helped Calumet County design a system several years ago and they've used it effectively. We're faculty to talk about it a little bit tomorrow when I meet with the administrator. They have a new administrator. They promoted somebody from within, very strong candidate. And I suggested that the evaluation process should be done with multiple sources of, of good information. And so, and done systematically. And so the process we put in place there was it's the response, the three sources is the outside community, you, and department heads. And, and we would have an evaluation system that would give people an opportunity to provide input into how they saw the manager, administrator managing the affairs of the organization. Typically, it would be the chairman of the administrative committee or the county board chair, the two of them working together, different people. And they would go out into the community and they'd, they'd talk to organizations you, you interface with, school superintendents, business leaders, Chamber of Commerce, whatever, and find out whether or not they had good feelings about how things were interacting on the county's business from their point of view. They'd go to department heads and solicit their opinions. And it'd certainly come to you, at least through the chairs of the committees. And the chairs of the committees can then gather the information from the committees that you chair. And you, and you bring all that information together on an annual basis and you summarize what do you see. When I teach performance evaluation to my clients, I don't even describe it as performance evaluation. I call it employee development. See, the emphasis here is, is to get better. Sure, we need to know how we're doing in order to figure out what we need to do to get better, but it's forward-thinking and it's developmental in nature as opposed to judgmental. People react better to that. So the intention with your administrator in evaluating performance is to help that administrator be a better administrator. And so one of the questions I suggested you ask of the candidates when they put in their resumes and say, I think I'd like to come to Door County, is to write back to us, what would you define as an effective evaluation process for your job? Let's see what they know. Let's evaluate them according to what they say. The other question I suggest we ask is to tell us why you think you'd be particularly good and qualified to help us develop our leadership within this county. What are your chops in that area? So that's sort of where we are in this process. I know the committee has taken a position on this and, and is ready to, I understand you're ready to, you've reached an agreement, you're prepared to move forward if this process makes sense to you. But it seemed that it would be a good idea because ultimately, you're going to have to make the call. You're going to delegate a lot of responsibility to this committee to bring you the right candidate that'll hold their feet to the fire. But we wanted to make sure you understood the thoroughness of the process that we've suggested they go through in finding the right person. You'll have a lot of applicants. The key is to find the good ones. Questions that you might have?
Can you start it off a little bit, address the salary range you think would be appropriate or not appropriate?
I, I have seen, I can tell you what I've seen, okay? I, I've seen county administrator, I just advised one county that was paying, it was paying its county administrator about eighty-six, eighty-seven thousand dollars. We did a study of, of county administrators in the immediate area. The going rate was about a hundred and four. I've seen recently county administrators hired at, at anywhere from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty. That's a big range. I, one process that I helped the county put together, we, we, on the screening process, we brought in as part of the review team, applicant review team, a CEO of a, a local industry. And the committee in the process was struggling a little bit with, with price tag problems. And the CEO stood up, he said, let me tell you something. I've been in business a long time, had some success. Every time I went cheap, I regretted it. That's pretty good advice. Now, that mean you have to go nuts. You've got a lot to offer here. This is a good, this is a good place to work. This is a good place to live. So I, you know, I don't, I just don't have a predetermined notion about where you're going to come out. I, I think you're liable to attract, it might attract some pretty good folks that want to come up here and spend another ten years or so helping you shape this government that, you know, are getting a little longer in the tooth and, you know, maybe you've got a pension somewhere. We've, we've seen some city managers hired in this state recently that are retired military. They're doing real well. You know, where they got hired at the hundred and thirty-five, hundred and forty thousand dollar range. Cities tend to pay more. There's no question that the market is up. There's a high demand for good administrators. You got a lot of pretty valuable real estate here. This, this is a county well worth protecting, as you saw from his presentation a few minutes ago. You've got some stuff going for you. So I don't know. I'd just say stick to the process, let's see what happens.
Does anybody got any, go ahead, David.
When you talked to administrative committee, you had mentioned a contract.
Yeah.
Could you expand on that?
Sure.
When they picked the final candidate.
I prefer an employment relationship involving the leader that's contractualized. It's my bias, because it's very clear in that contract what the terms are. If for some reason the heads, the relationship heads south, you know exactly what it is you're entitled to as a board. The rules of the game are established. Most, not all, most professional administrators will tell you they would prefer to have an agreement. I think it gives you a better basis for a relationship. I've done it both ways. I've had other situations where the board has said, no, you know, you're an at-will employee, you serve at our, our pleasure, majority of the board, you're out of here. You usually end up fighting over what it's going to take to cut the deal. I just as soon avoid the fight. That's my thought.
What are, what are some of the items you'd be putting in, that you recommend putting in there?
What constitutes basis for dismissal? Usually, the way these are written is that if, if, if you were to decide that it's time to part ways, you're taking the initiative as a board, and there isn't cause, and cause is usually defined as felonious conduct, that's something you've done that's a felony or equivalent, then there's some sort of a severance provision. Quite often, early in the employment relationship, that severance provision isn't as long as it might be after you've been there five years. And I've done that with contracts, where we started out with six months, person's there three years, it's time to renew the contract, we renegotiate the contract, we take six months, make it out to a year. Everybody's more comfortable, okay? In the case of a discharge for cause, which means that felonious conduct, zilch, nada. Very clear. You have to specify those terms very clearly. The salary is put in, what the basis of compensation is, how that compensation will be reviewed. Usually in an employment agreement, there's a provision requiring you folks to do a performance review on an annual basis, so that the person knows where they stand. Most administrators want that because they want to get better, they want to know where they stand. There's a term, how long is the contract? I've seen them anything from one year to three years to rolling. Now, every year, you add another year on the end. Those usually don't happen until somebody's been there a while and you get comfortable with them. You get a starter agreement of some kind with basic terms. You let the person come in, prove themselves, then you renegotiate the agreement. I don't believe personally, I think it's bad public policy to tie your administrator's pay to the pay plan of the people that he administers. I think it's a conflict. I want that person independently making recommendations on the pay of the people they supervise. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leo, had his end up first, then Chuck.
There is value to having a search among your current employees
Oh, yeah.
to apply for that position of administrator, solely because they've been in the system, they recognize some of the shortcomings and as well, things that perhaps would have made it better for employment. Would you suggest that we do a private, or a, not a private, but a prior to going national or regional or statewide, whatever, that we do some kind of a search within the county to avoid all the, the later suggestion like, well, you never contacted me?
Sure.
Rather than throw them in the fray of being compared with others who are going to come with.
Sure.
Like you say, the last ten years and nothing.
It, it, you have to kind of weigh what's going on here. On the one hand, if there's sort of a preferred internal candidate and you go to that person without going to the outside, is that person ever going to feel like they could have wanted it had there been a competition? That's the downside. The upside is you avoid a lot of, of cost and expense and, and time in making the selection. In, in Calumet County, at the most recent hire, we had an outstanding applicant available to us who had accepted an interim assignment as county administrator, who was the Director of Human Services. And the county was able to persuade him that they really want him to do that job and they put up, and they worked out the deal, and that was the end of it. Depends what you got. It depends. I think I would say to you that if you had a strong internal candidate, but you had any unease about it whatsoever, then I would take it out as a search and I'd encourage that person to compete and put them in the pile with everybody else and, and let them arise.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I think it all goes down to whether you have any doubt. And that's where we were, for example, in Calumet. We talked to their lead committee and we said, you know, and it was just like acclamation. We didn't have to have any smoke go out of the chimney. I mean, it was, yeah. This, this is our person. And they're very happy, and it's worked out well.
Would there be reluctance on behalf, on the part of the people who are currently employed to want to make application for fear of?
I, you know, I've not, I've not found most public employees to be timid souls. That, that's not been my experience. You know, I, I wouldn't think they'd have any reluctance to step forward.
Thank you.
Unless there's something about you they're afraid of, as a board or something like that, but, you know, I, I don't mean you personally, but I mean, you know.
Well, I think you hit it right on the head.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I guess it's interesting to listen to you because you've apparently talked to the corporate world and you're talking to a county board.
Yeah.
Our, our mindset is totally different.
I know.
And it takes a whole lot longer to get to where they are within days. Ours is drawn out in months. And we want the best for the cheapest instead of putting a price tag out there looking for the best. out there looking for the best.
I know. It, it, God, God knows, I've, you know, for forty years, I've made my living advising public entities, so there's something, I don't, but people, my, my private sector partner looks at me, and he says, I think you're outta your mind. I say, well, I could be, but it's too late now, you know, this is, this is my, you're my client, I mean, that's what I'm used to dealing with, and understanding, I mean, I haven't walked into a county courthouse in my life, and I think I've been in almost everyone in Wisconsin, the one, every time I walk in the door, the first thing somebody says to me is, now, why don't you understand, we're conservative here. I say, are you more conservative than you were down the road? I mean, you know, you got in a contest or something you got going on? Obviously, obviously, I mean, you're doing, you're, you're doing your job by trying to be as conservative as possible. I just wanna make sure that you understand, from my eyes, anyway, what I'm, see as being the significance of this recruitment. This is a big one. In this environment, where people are learning how to manage in a new way, we have to find leadership that knows how to pull this off, and can help us all kinda move this thing forward. So, just take your time. Be patient.
Does anybody else got any questions? Grant, you wanna respond to anything on this, or?
Nope.
Nobody's got any, go ahead.
Um, have, do we have a contract with your company?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
To do what?
Just to get you to this point.
To get this to this?
Yes.
But not further?
No.
Right? Okay.
Happy to help you, but that, that's not where the gig is right now.
Just what I was gonna say.
No, it's not a pit, and it's not a pitch for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I'm not on the admin committee, I don't know what it is.
No, my, my, my charge was to help you come up with a process for recruit, to recruit, and then to evaluate an administrator.
And have you done that previously for us?
I have not done it here for you.
Okay.
No, no, I don't, none of the prior decisions were, I don't have my fingerprints on any of those.
Yeah, and they were, and they were good, it's just that.
That means he doesn't wanna take any credit.
I'm not taking any credit.
Yeah. And, you know, not saying anything bad about.
No.
Because they are, were good, just they didn't last. So, when you talk about hiring some retired, maybe person who wants to live in Door County to be an administrator, we might be better off having a forty-five-year-old who wants to, uh, raise their family here and have a job for fifteen, twenty years.
That's probably where I would sug-, if I, if I was.
You know, I mean, just.
If I was egging you, urging you on in the search, that's probably what I'd be looking at.
And, and also, there's, that's why I was wondering if we hired a company to do that, and Kelly would know that, I suppose, but there, there are people.
Oh, yeah, there.
There are people that are qualified out there, as far as knowing, uh, reading through people and hiring executives that have done it before, and that.
What the, a couple of words about that, cause we did discuss it, the question was, you know, do you, do you need to have a search company run this process?
Right, that's kinda.
Yeah. My, my sense of it is, kind of judging it from all our conversations, is probably not. Now, let me, but let me make a distinction here, there's search, and then there's search. There's two different kinds. You can hire a recruitment company to review the applicants, screen them, et cetera, we call that a passive search. Uh, where you put an ad out there, people come to you, and then you're using a firm to kinda cull through the group, and help you sort through and make recommendations, maybe qualify them, check references. I did this for a county. Now, I ended up talking to the, to the, to the, uh, as a reference check, the guy who, who owned Cincinnati Reds, I mean, I, I, I did twelve reference checks. That's passive search. Active search is headhunting. That's where I go out, or somebody goes out, and they start identifying a pool of applicants, and typically, you would want somebody who's very active in this business and knows where all the stars are. Got a long list, and they start working that list, and they say, you wanna come to Door County? Do you know anybody that'd like to go to Door County? And you, and you build an applicant list, that's active search. And it's a different fee. You'll pay a lot more for that search than you'll pay for passive search. Passive search, maybe ten, fifteen thousand dollars. Active search, maybe fifty, sixty thousand dollars, different deal. I don't think you need to. I think because Door County has got such a brand, I think you're gonna attract a lot of applicants. I don't think you're gonna have to spend that money, and so I didn't recommend it. I didn't recommend you do, me do it either, cause I don't, I think you can do it inside.
Biz?
Uh, Charlie, could you expand more on, on the required and the desired qualifications? What, what's absolutely, in your mind, required versus what's, what's desired? There's, there's a short paragraph, uh, you know, in our handout, that, uh, it's hard to determine which, which is which here.
Well, I, and I didn't write the ad, so, um, um, let me tell you what I think is required, okay?
Thank you.
I, I think you want somebody who's got proven leadership ability. That's got experience. Um, I think you want somebody that has had good exposure to the public sector. I, I think management in the public sector is different than management, managing you folks as a board of directors is a lot different than managing a, a board of directors in a privately-held company, where many times, the executive picked the members, different deal. Public's business is different, so I'm looking for public management experience, and I'm looking for somebody that's heavy on developing staff and talent. Those are, those are absolute requirements. Bachelor's degree, sure, master's degree, maybe. Nice, I think you do learn something. Um, having done it myself, I think I learned something in the process. Would it be critical? I don't think so. But, but some real chops in the experience level, and a desire to manage in the public sector, not burned out. Excited to be here, wants to lead you, wants to work with you, some fire in the belly. You look in their eyes, and there's something there, you know? Not, not beat up somewhere else and looking for a place to land. You'll know it when you see it.
Go ahead, John.
How many years do you think it takes to develop those qualities we're looking for?
Probably ten or fifteen. I think you gotta, you gotta go through enough budgets. I think you want somebody who's been through a couple of economic cycles, I mean, I think I've been through four recessions now. I start to know what happens when one occurs, it's nice to know. Some sense of history and perspective. Somebody's been around enough challenges and difficulties to know how to not get thrown off balance when you run up to the next one. It just takes ti-, it takes time. You have, you have, you have to have done it somewhere. I don't know if you necessarily need to have been a county administrator somewhere, you could've been an adminis-, a department head in a large department. You bet. You bet. You know, when we hired the administrator in Calliope County, Director of Human Services, statewide leader in his profession, human services, big deal, it's a big department, it's a large part of your budget. Uh, you certainly want somebody that understands finance, and understands people. And I just don't think you get that immediately, so I, you know, I, I, I would, it's hard to put an age on something, but, you know, when you add up the experience and the education and everything else, you're, you know, you're, you're probably looking at somebody who's, you know, is forty, forty-five, look, looking to, looking to, maybe looking to finish, and the other question is, why are they coming? Are they coming here to finish a career? Is this a capstone experience? Or are they coming to punch a ticket to move on down the road to the next place? Is that acceptable to you? How much mileage do you want out of them? You know, what, what, as, I just redid an administrator's contract in a city, um, with, you know, and I love the comment the guy made when we, we went through his contract, he says, listen, my kid's born, born, born here, but this is now home, and I wanna stay here. You know, long answer your question, ten, fifteen years of experience, then the question is, how do you wanna try to keep the person here? You'll probably do an initial contract that's relatively short, two, three years, trial marriage, if it works out, sign a big agreement, nail it down. We've done this in the credit union industry, for example, we do a lot of work in the credit union industry, where, you know, we'll have an executive that, that is fifty years old, has built up this financial institution to something that's big and great, and then they, every board looks at themselves and said, boy, if this guy walks out the door, we got a problem. And we put together a long-term deal that makes sure he doesn't walk out the door. I've done a couple of, of execu-, of, of executive contracts in the not-for-profit sector that have that characteristic, but you're not there yet. You might get there. You got the right applicant, you wanna keep him.
Right.
Uh, yes, should an administrator be also a department head of one of the departments? I see some places are like.
Could. You're small, I mean, you're of a size where that might happen, um, but the, the question is, you can't get distracted, that's a concern, um, and because you've got a broader influence, and you have to not be seen as playing favorites. That's a danger. I'll take care of mine, and then I have a special relationship with the chairman of that committee that I don't have with other committees, so I would be cautious about There, there's a danger that you'd see that as sort of inefficient solution, cause you don't, then don't have to pay a department head, too. Might be an expensive decision in the long run, you might've been better off saying, no, no, you can't do this. I, I, my own company, number, I built a survey company a number of years ago, and, and I was also consulting, and I, I just, I was torn in two different directions, and I had to say, no, I'm not gonna consult anymore, I'm gonna build a survey company, and I let the consulting go. I took it back later, when I got out of the survey business, but I couldn't, I couldn't straddle that fence.
Leo?
Yeah, along the same lines that you were talking about, length of whatever, there's either a, a notion or perceived something or other that says, the length of an administrator sticking around in any municipality is limited to, not limited, but usually in the area of about five to six years. Can you give any credence to that, or is that just a fallacy that's out there?
No, I think there's, I, I think that has been a reality, um, more recently. Um, I know, when we created the administrative coordinator role in Calliope County back in the late seventies, I told the then-county clerk who became the administrative coordinator, he wouldn't survive a year, and I think he made it twenty-five. Um, and then it caught up. But, but, um, this is a tough business today. You know, when, um, and I don't, I don't know what the seniority of the county board here is in terms of how long you've held your, your positions, but when I started in this business, I typically had committees that were board members, had been in service twenty-five, thirty years. The average on the county board might be eighteen, nineteen, something like that, I mean, it was, it was a long-serving board, position by position, and over the years, I've seen those situations start to churn a little bit, and new people coming in have different expectations than the people they replaced, and, and they're not, and they're not always patient about taking the time to learn what it's all about before they, you know, push for their agenda. Um, I've had one county, uh, client where, uh, FSD got up in arms and replaced the majority of the board, knocked off eighteen members.
We don't recall that ever happening here.
Well, you know, the emotions run high, I mean, you, you, life, you know, and so, it's, sometimes the administrator isn't welcome anymore, didn't do anything wrong, it's just time to move on. Sometimes the board reaches a different stage in its life and says, we need a different kinda person than we had before. I mean, that happens with pastors, for example, I used to be on a church personnel committee. Lord, help me. And, 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 you know, and so times change, but it, it is, it's difficult managing in this environment.
Biz?
Yeah, I guess I've asked this question in the past, but maybe you can expand on it a little bit more. When we get down to a, to a final candidate, or a couple candidates, and it gets to the background investigation.
Yeah.
How, how thorough should that be in that, we know that if someone visits a, a community where they're from, they're gonna unturn stones that otherwise maybe wouldn't be known. And I guess I, Sturgeon Bay or, or the county has had some bad experiences with hiring head people, and they, and they did poor background investigation, and then they found out what they had after the person was hired, and it costs a lot of money, you know, to make them go away. So, uh, how thorough of an, of a background do you think, Charlie, should, should be done?
Well, the, with, with electronics these days, we all leave a real interesting track record, you know? Um, you can find out an awful lot by hiring an investigative firm to go turn over some rocks in terms of, of, you know, where you've been credit-wise. That tends to say a lot. Um, uh, certainly, police background check, fairly deep, I mean, that's absolute, um, that has to occur. Um, but in addition to that, you know, like, this county that I helped with a surge, you do tra-, I ask somebody for twelve references, if I ask you for three, you can probably think of three people who'll say something nice about you. I ask for twelve, and life starts to get more interesting, particularly if I then ask those twelve, when I talk to them, tell me somebody else to talk to, and pretty soon, you get a pretty clear picture. If you're astute, yeah, I think you get a pretty clear picture of what you're dealing with here. You know, I don't know about you, I suppose we all have something back in, you know, a skeleton back there somewhere, we just, soon nobody turn up. And, and how, and what are you gonna hold people accountable for ultimately, but, but, but you wanna know the, the stuff that was really critical. And so, do you need to go to a community? I don't know, I think it would sorta depend upon the applicant. Uh, I think you can find out an awful lot by asking, a good interviewer can find out a lot, and I certainly would do a, a, get a behavioral psychologist to do a deep dive into the personality of the individual, and you will find out a lot. That's very, very helpful. I'd spend, I'd spend money on that one, before I'd worry about sending somebody off to another community to start talking to people on site, I mean, I would make sure that one happened first.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Going once, twice? Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would just like to thank Charlie for his insight and his candid comments that we all, I hope, listened to. And I would make a motion that we refer the county administrator recruitment process to the administrative committee for review and implementation, and eventual return with that information to the county board.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Chuck? Chuck? Is there any discussion? I guess, do I take a vote, or are you on us? Hmm? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed.
Uh, the only other item we have is the, next county board meeting is, uh, March twenty-fourth at ten a.m. Uh, this'll probably be the last time that it'll, it'll be at ten, the reason we have it at ten is because of Joel, he doesn't stay overnight, which is a good thing, with four kids at home, Joel, yeah, it's a good thing. So, motion to adjourn.
So?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned.